Good evening. Welcome to the West Covina City Council meeting. Today is September the 5th, 2023, and it is 7:02 PM. I am Rosario Diaz, and I am your Centennial Mayor. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Martinez of Amazing Love Ministries, and Councilman Cantos will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Fathers, we gather here this evening. We thank you for the freedoms that we so richly enjoy in America, and we thank you, Father, for those who serve as men and women that through their centuries and through this decade, the past decades, Father, have served, and some have even given their lives for the freedoms that we exercise this evening. We thank you for them, and we thank you, Father, for the freedoms, Father, that have been inscribed, Father, in our Constitution. Father, we ask you to help us never to take those freedoms for granted. And so we ask for wisdom for our elected officials and all those that labor in this city. We ask even wisdom, Father, for all the educators as we get to the start of a new year. We pray for the teachers, and we pray for the administrators, we pray for the school board, and we speak the protection of your angels around our schools, Father, that our schools, as I have prayed many times, continue to be safe havens. We pray, Father, for peace in our communities, Father, in our neighborhoods, and we pray, Father, even for a spirit of unity and encouragement, Father, toward one another, even as we gather to discuss our differences, perhaps, to discuss how we may best cause West Covina to continue to be a blessing to many. God bless America, and God bless West Covina, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. With all hats off, please place your right hand on your heart and follow my lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Lady Mayor. Councilman Cantos.
Here.
Councilwoman Wu.
Yep.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Tabasai.
Present.
Mayor Diaz.
Here. City Attorney, is there anything to report out of the closed sessions?
Nothing, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Before moving to oral communications, we have an adjournment. Ms. Carol Muller passed away on Monday, August the 28th, 2023. She was a longtime resident of West Covina, who was a volunteer for several organizations, including the Historical Society. She was appointed Chair of the Community and Senior Services Commission this March. She was very involved with the community, her church, and loved crafting, traveling, and spending time with her family. She recently just came back from a huge RV trip across country with her husband to visit family over the summer. Carol was a beloved member of the community, and she will be deeply missed. Now we're going to move on to presentations. I'd like to have Sheri come up to the front. This certificate honors Sheri Fisher as the 2023 Citizen of the Year. She received this award on the Community and Senior Service -- wait, I'm sorry, at the Historical Society of West Covina. Sheri Fisher is a dedicated member of the Kiwanis Club of West Covina and serves on the Community and Senior Service Commission. She does a lot for our community, and I'm really happy for her, and I just want to thank you so much for doing everything that you do for where you work at Marrow Gardens and for the community. Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
I would, thank you. Thank you. I'm honored. I'm really honored to receive this award. People don't volunteer for recognition. We volunteer because we want to make a difference in lives and communities, and my goal has always been to bring people together in a positive light, to do things for our community that makes us better as a community. So receiving this award is an honor, but it's also a little bit of fun. I'm having a little bit of fun with it, but, you know, when I started volunteering when my children were small, it was to be a role model for them. My son, Gary, and my daughter Tiffany and Gina all grew up in West Covina, and it makes a difference to them and their lives. So I ask all of you to find time to volunteer, find a club. I happen to be a Kiwanian, and they've been great support, so find a club, give back, and make your community better. Let's give Sheri a break.
Yay!
In celebration of her 2023 Citizen of the Year, Kiwanis, September 5th, 2023. Congratulations. Okay, now, before we move on to oral communications, if anyone wants to address the City Council, please fill out an orange card. We've changed it today.
Orange or yellow works, yes, ma'am.
And please submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. How many do we have?
I have 10 speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Our first speaker is John Carson, followed by Peter Mesk, followed by John Shoemaker. Mr. Shoemaker? Nope. Mr. Carson? Sorry, I was looking right at you.
Tony, hi. Madam Mayor, it's the City Council. Good seeing everybody again. The reason I'm here tonight is I want to address the safety concern at Wood Grove Park. It's a fire hazard, and it's extremely dangerous. This park is not safe for our community. The homeless have been taking over the park. Several fires have been started in the last three years, also one started last week, and luckily, the fire department got it out pretty quick, but it was very, very close to the condos near where I live. So this really needs to be addressed. It's a beautiful park. Oli came out, had a meeting with me, along with Mylan from Code Enforcement. I appreciate the help from the city, but this needs to be addressed. Bathrooms are a mess, way too dark, and also the sinks are broken. It's just vandalized all the time. It is time to make our parks safe again. My recommendations, these are just my recommendations, but first of all, the brush surrounding the park needs to be cleaned out. This way, if the police drive by, Code Enforcement, they have a clear sight inside that park. There's hidden dangers in that park. In June, a very good friend of mine was walking her dog on a leash, and some homeless people had a pit bull that got turned loose and attacked her and her dog. The dog, I think it was like, it did survive, but it was about $2,600 damage. The homeless did nothing to stop the fight at all, just walked the opposite way. So that's just one of the dangers. There's plenty more. The way I understood it, there were several arrests that were made when Code Enforcement went in and law enforcement. So we need to keep our parks clean and safe. My recommendations, too, is maybe make it inviting for the public, pickleball courts, maybe volleyball courts, basketball courts. These are just recommendations, maybe an exercise machine that they have at some parks. I've gone to other parks, and that will invite the public back, but until then, I wouldn't recommend going through that park right now. Like I said, I appreciate Code Enforcement has been monitoring it, law enforcement, but it's still, there's too much shrub, you know? They cleaned it out pretty good, but then the homeless just moved farther down towards Fair Grove, and that's where the fire started last Friday. I believe it was Thursday or Friday. I think it was Thursday. And just the idea that we can coexist with the homeless is nonsense, and it's not safe. How is it working in LA? How is it working in San Francisco, Seattle? I just had a close friend that was in Seattle not too long ago. He didn't even want to get out of his car. It was so bad, and it wasn't always that way, but that's what will happen if our cities are -- I'm just worried about West Covina right now. I don't want to be San Francisco. I don't want to be Seattle, and I don't want to be LA. Letty, you work down by LA, right? See it every day. Correct? So hopefully, our state will come up with a plan to deal with the homeless. Right now, every plan that they do, it doesn't work. They spent, I guess, 2.5 billion. They're asking for more money, but hopefully someday they can address that, and it's not working right now. So we need to come up with solutions to move them along, because we pay way too many taxes to have to tolerate this. So thank you once again. I appreciate it, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter, followed by John Shoemaker, followed by Matthew Smith.
Good evening. I'd like to thank West Covina PD, Code Enforcement, and Maintenance in trying to maintain Wood Grove Park on a piggyback on what Mr. John was saying. It's just from the poorest urban to the affluent suburban, this homeless problem, these squatters, these illegal dumps are just out of control. It's just afflicted our nation. It's a reflection of the sloppy and lazy culture in which I believe we're living in. It's a shame. On July 4th, I live two blocks away from the park, by the way. On July 4th, I was walking my dog up to the park, and I see all this debris in the middle of the street, bricks and rocks I've never seen before. This lady, the neighbor told me that this crazed dude was just shouting nonsense and had a bar of some kind and breaking walls on properties, mailboxes, auxiliary lighting, and left a trail. And guess where he was heading to? He was heading straight to our beloved park and its refuge. You know, it's a, these people just hide out, and it's just a haven for criminal activity from Azusa, Amor and Azusa. I mean, that's their safe haven there. And I've lived here in West Covina since '92, and I've taken my dog. Lately, I don't feel safe. I just recently retired, three weeks ago, from City of Los Angeles, LSD, which is the Liveability Service Department. We deal directly with homeless. We take out their homeless camps. So I was there, and I seen it up close and personal, the filth, the smell. I was right in there, and LAPD is hands-off with the whole thing. I don't know what's wrong with LA, but they just chasing the tail, and I've gotten frustrated. We just remove camps, and they go across the street, and then when we're done, completely cleaning, pressure wash the sidewalk, they come, they move right back in. It's just ridiculous. It's, I've never seen anything like it. And a few of my teammates have gotten assaulted. I personally never have, but I kind of fear for my safety going into that park, because there's just so much overgrowth that you could hide anywhere. And Sunday mornings, I find myself, I'm alone, and I just look around, I say, well, the Lord's gonna help me. That's, there's no one else there to help me. Maybe my dog might come, but yeah, it's sad. I'm glad that Oli has put a face on this complex injustice here at the park, but that's all I've got to say. I would rather see it developed and taken away as much as I hate it, and develop on it, put a city yard on it, and put some, rather than to have it a safe haven for these irreputable people just coming in and out, just shopping carts, just, it's ridiculous. And I pay a lot of taxes to live here. It's, but anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good evening.
John Shoemaker, followed by Matthew Smith, followed by Doug For.
You know, a lot of these issues, you can handle one city at a time. When I was a kid, the doctor that I went to, his son was the LAPD. This was in the '60s, when all the Miranda rulings were coming out. And I asked, isn't it frustrating, you as a police officer, to arrest somebody, and they're probably released before you finish the paperwork? He was replying, I was eight, nine years old, something like that. He goes, my job's to arrest them and do the paperwork, send it to the DA. DA lets them go, not my problem. My job is to arrest them again if they continue to commit crimes or they do something that's, you know, an offense. That's the attitude that we need sitting on the council. You know, I will hear people, and that's understood. Well, you're just going to move them to Covina. Well, you know what? Then it's Covina's problem, not mine. Children in our community aren't going to parks that have, that are filthy, that have human waste in it, needles, or whatever the case may be. Covina can take care of it their way, or any other city. There's 483 cities in this, in this state, and we're the 12th, 13th, or 14th worst off That if they all said, we're not going to put up with this, guess what would happen? Things change, and they greatly change. That's one of the reasons I'm running for City Council, because I want that change and have that attitude up here of what can we do, not what we can't do. You know, I've asked a previous chief, who we're probably going to give four or five million dollars to after he wins the lawsuit, you know, made the remark one time about, well, there's nothing we can do. So I asked him, are they exempt from drug laws? No. Are they exempt from drinking laws? No. Are they exempt from, you know, exposing themselves in public? No. Then why aren't you arresting them? It takes that approach to what can we do, and we need a little bit more, you know, from And that's the sad state, is we don't have people who want to handle the problem. They want to look at it a different way. And one of the things that I've noticed over the years is how many people, when they sit up there, tell people, you know, if you have a problem, call me. You know, the first thing you should do, if you're used to being an executive, being a leader of an organization, when somebody calls you, you ask them, have you talked to so-and-so yet? And if the answer is no, say, can you please talk to them to get the problem resolved? If it's something to do with our community service area, have you talked to people there? Because what you want to find out is, if they call you back and they still have the problem, you know that somebody in community service isn't doing their job, somebody in the city manager's office isn't doing their job, and the city manager isn't doing their job. That's what you need to find out. That's what you need to find out. It's kind of like when I was in the military, they hated a congressional inquiry from somebody, because there was a general who wanted to get another star, or a colonel who wanted a star. Well, when Congress made that inquiry, that general wasn't mad about the inquiry, because what would come down to that lieutenant was, why aren't you doing your job and handling these things, and why am I being bothered with them? That's the question you guys should be asking. I also look at it, too, whether you do it intentionally or not, when you call somebody on staff and say, please handle this, what are they supposed to do when you have the power of the purse over them? They can get their job, or they can't get promoted, or they can be promoted. When you get a call, they're going to address your issues completely different and quicker, unintentionally or not. Takes very few people, and especially with some of the people on this council, how they will go after people who don't, you know, kiss the ring, bow to them and everything else, if they say no, I need to hear it from somebody else. Or when you call somebody and say, hey, can you take care of this for me? You don't realize that maybe you're weaponizing that department against people, because there really isn't a record of what's going on, and that's bad. Bad policy, it's bad leadership. Thank you.
Matthew Smith, followed by Doug For, followed by Laura Barbosa.
Good evening, Council. As usual, I'm going to open up by saying, you know, Bun Street is very thankful for all the support that was given to us during COVID, but we are greatly disappointed that the local businesses and the city could not come up with a resolution between them to continue outdoor dining. There were different ways that outdoor dining could have continued, but since March, I've been presenting on this, the city has chosen not to implement them. Your law firm has experience in doing this. The city of Fullerton currently continues outdoor dining on the streets of Harbor and Wilshire. If you look at those streets, there are street closures, and what we had represent in our city was much more aesthetically pleasing than what's going on in Fullerton right now. The contrary, law firm of Jones and Meyer represents the city of Fullerton, and I could only imagine that they would certainly have experience, since we've been discussing this since March, on how we could do this in our city. I could only suspect that there just wasn't ever an interest in assisting local business in extending outdoor dining. Some irony behind us losing outdoor dining is also, I've been told that it needs to close down because of the Health Department's ordinance. Restaurant owners and the city, without using terms, we're not big Health Department fans, you know? The Health Department is being looked at independently here to have our own. There's going to be no pushback from the restaurant industry in the city to do this, but in this case, where we could actually legally extend outdoor dining through December 31st, now we're using the Health Department, which none of us like, to, as a clause on why we need to shut it down. There is some irony to all of us working in regards to eliminating somebody from the outside telling us what to do, and then it being enforced, their enforcement, when we could go around it and prove our independence. Once again, I am disappointed that, through a variety of ways, the city could have addressed this issue for at least half a year and chose not to support local business. Thank you.
Doug For, followed by Laura Barbosa, followed by Winwin Zhong.
Hi, guys. My name is Doug For, co-owner of Bun Street, Scoop Street, Tamale Street, also a resident in this amazing city and love the city. Lived here for seven years, moved from Long Beach area and love it up here. Just disappointed, you know, we had six parking spots for six businesses, for six restaurants. Yes, you see Matt here. Once in a while, I come here. It's not just us. The other ones are scared to come. I've asked them to come here tonight, the other three restaurant owners, and they're like, no, no, no. Matt and I put up all the money for that. We spent thousands. We were redoing the benches. We were redoing the flowers. We were moving graffiti. It's not just Matt and I's business. I've been asked why we're asking for special favor. We are not asking for special favor. It was six restaurants using six parking stalls, you know? I would truly encourage you guys to go to Glendora. Go to downtown Glendora, please, and look what the city did for their restaurants there. That is now permanent. It is absolutely amazing what the city did for their restaurants there. I was really hoping, I'm not, I, we would front the money. We've told you, we'd front $10,000 to make a permanent, you know, make it look nice out there, you know? I didn't even ask the city for any money to do this. I would just really encourage you guys to go up to Glendora and see what the city did for every restaurant that's there, in their downtown area. Also, San Dimas. San Dimas, the city is also doing things in San Dimas for their restaurants, and they're outside. Yes, the pandemic's over. I get it. I'm so tired of hearing about the pandemic also, but people like outdoor dining, right? Pandemic numbers are up right now, you know? People are wanting to sit back outside. Masks are coming back, which sucks, right? But people are now asking to go outside. We were also told that we were going to let this three-day weekend go by. It was a very busy weekend for us, that we would have all, you know, that you guys wouldn't remove the orange barriers until after this weekend. We came in on Friday morning. They were removed sometime early, early morning, because when we got there at 7:00, they were all gone, which was a little disappointing. Again, six restaurants, six spots, you know, the city does own that, those six parking spots, you know? I just really wish that something else would, you know, would come about that. You know, I just, yeah, just feel disappointed, but thank you. Tony, thank you. When we had our smashing grabs, Tamale Street, Bun Street, we had smashing grabs 4:00 in the morning. We weren't really getting anywhere. We had a stolen safe. We had a phone in the safe. We were tracking that phone all around. Tony got me straight to the top of the police, you know, to help track that phone. I now understand West Covina PD has warrants out for their arrest, so I'm super happy about that, because I've always said, you do something to my businesses, I want to, you know, we will press full forward, and, you know, we want them arrested. We want them, you know, tracked down. That safe went to about four different places, just so you guys know, between La Puente, Houses in West Covina, and Pomona, until they realized, oh, crap, there's a phone, and they popped it open, and then it all disappeared pretty fast, but we had tracking, and thank you to Tony for getting me up top really quick with the police, and thank you to the police for, you know, handling that so quickly, and warrants out for people's arrest, which I absolutely love. So I love this city, you know? I know this is a countless job, six spots on a street that the spots aren't very used very often, you know? We were the one, Matt and I were the ones paying for insurance every month on these spots that you guys asked us to put. We named you guys additionally insured. We were paying every month for all six restaurants. Yes, we do own three of the six, but, you know, it was just very disappointing that it all came to a close. All right. Thank you, guys.
Laura Barazza, followed by Winwin Zhong, followed by David Schwartz.
My name is Laura Barazza, and I was here a year ago, June the 7th, and I'm glad to see that it's on the agenda, number 11. And Mr. Cantos, I'd like to address you specifically, because now you are our District Four representative. So listen very clearly, and I am so glad that there are two individuals here that live in my area. I am representing Anson Way Rodney Neighborhood Watch, okay? So what we, we've been having our fires, and we would like to thank you that you have moved the homeless, and you have cleaned out our hill on Azusa, Amor section, but now they've moved over to the park, and we can't use our park, you know? We're afraid to take our kids. I mean, I understand the homeless, but there's criminal activity within those homeless individuals, okay? And that's the issue, absolutely the bathrooms. Absolutely, we can't take our dogs and our children there, you know? It's very sad. But the main issue is that our landscape is dirty. It has not been cleaned up. The sprinklers are broken. I sent a video to the council, you know, last year, and this gushing water was running out, and all of us ran with our buckets, believe it or not, on Anson Way to fill them up, right? Because it's water. We need it. We want to, you know, it was crazy. But that's the situation. But that's the situation. Coming down here today, the family Galindo, who is part of the watch as well, just had a fire. She says, by the way, Station Four is just here, we have another fire down on the slope. Just want to let you know that that's still happening, it's not going away. Station number four, fire station, praise the Lord, they already know how to get into our backyards to access these hills. That's how often they're coming, and what they're saying to us is, you need to continue pushing, because these hills are gonna go, and we're not gonna be able to save you. We can turn off these little fires you're getting, but we're not gonna be able to save the big one that's gonna come. I, I just wanted to thank you, though, that it's on the agenda, and I'm looking forward to this actually to get taken, it took a year, but I'm, I'm glad it's on there. And one other thing I'd like to request is the budget year-end of June 30th, 2022, because I came before this budget was, was, was put out, and I'd like to see what happened with that budget the, the few years before, because nothing's been done, I've been living here since 1979, and, I mean, within the last 10 years, this, this has been going on. So, I would like to have a copy of that budget report, and I don't know how to go about it, I've gone through all the minutes, but it doesn't specify.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's all. Just wanted to remind you, we're still here, we haven't gone away, and I'm so glad there's other neighbors that are addressing the issue too. Thank you, sirs.
Thank you.
Wenwen Zhong, followed by David Schwartz, followed by R. Robinson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pretend, and City Council members, Ms. City Manager Staff, and all the members of the community. My name is Wenwen Zhong, and West Covina Library Manager. Well, September is Library Card signup month, and we are promoting LA County Library free services, resources, and collections. We urge everyone to get a library card, and with that LA County Library Card, you have access to, you know, free access to all the library collections, services, programs, and resources, such as downloads, download ebooks, audiobooks, magazines, and newspapers, music, and also screen movies, and you would also have access to thousands of thousands of full-text newspaper and magazine articles, and we also have, I, let me just mention a few, we also have online free classes, and hundreds of them, on various subjects, and they are all free, we also have a free online live tutoring program, and also for the, in the library, you will also have a free, like, say, you have access to printing, wireless printing copy machine, and every day you get 10 free copies, and so just to name a few, there's a lot, lot more, and it's a free to get a library card, and if you have not had one, it's time to get one, and, it's time to get one, and in September, we are giving out incentives, like a beautiful library brand bag and a pencil pouch, just come out, get a library card, okay? Well, the library's annual bookmark contest has started just today, and we would like to invite students K-12 to design a bookmark for the library, and also compete in these categories, like K-22, 325, 628, and 9212. And the library card entry form is available at the library, or you can download one from the LA County Library's website. The last day to turn in entries is October 21st. West Covina Library is remodeling right now, exciting. The library building is under construction, and the library is closed to the, to the public, and the library, West Covina Library, we won't open this year.
Not this year?
Forcing construction delays. We apologize for the inconvenience of, you know, for the library closure. Well, the library still, we, we still offer sidewalk service, and Tuesdays to Saturdays, sidewalk service include a hold pickup, a library card registration, and telephone support, library materials, books, search, lookup, and also place on hold, renew, and the returns, and we also offer free COVID test, self-tests. The library, the bookmark contest entry forms are also available, we also offer art activity kits, and we really apologize for the inconvenience of the library closure, I totally understand it's been, it's been, I apologize that there were more enforcing construction delays there. Sorry for that, and so, four library services available at all LA County Library locations, the nearest ones include the Baldwin Park Library, La Puente Library, Sunkist Library, Walnut Library, yes, but please visit them, the library card is good at all 86 county library locations, so I just wanted to give you an update, apologize.
Okay, Wenwen, just a quick question, okay? You're not going to open this year, when you're going to open?
I hope I get.
You've done this like 10 years already, it's like, my generation's kind of passed, so how, when are you gonna open, you don't know?
I know, Tony, Tony, thank you so much for the question, that's the question, it's in my mind also. I, I do not have an, an actual date, and I, we do not, so this is, it's just a delay, and I apologize, I apologize, I'm so.
Thank you.
As soon as I hear anything, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
David Schwartz, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Jim Grivitch.
Disneyland could be built in a day, one day in a year, and they can't open a frickin' library, that's disgusting. My speech is addressed to Mayor Diaz, the mayor pro temp, councilmen and women, the city manager, the city attorney, and the police department, and the police chief and his department. Anti-Semitism, considered one of the oldest forms of hatred, is often referred to as the canary in the, canary in the coal mine. As we have seen, when anti-Semitism, antisemitism is prevalent, there's only a matter of time before hatred is espoused, targeting others. We have witnessed an unprecedented rise in antisemitism over the past several years. Since 2016, there has been a 33% increase in reported antisemitic incidents here in the United States. In fact, California has seen a 41% increase in antisemitic activity. This has included targeted attacks on Jews walking, walking out of synagogues, swastikas and other forms of vandalism hidden, hitting schools, banners being placed on the 405 freeway overpass saying Kanye, Kanye was right, following Wes' rant against Jews, uh, where am I? And a series of flyers spewing hate, threats, accusations about Jews thrown on neighborhood driveways, and don't forget the terrorist attack at the Tree of Life Synagogue, where a congregation was observing Sabbath morning services on October 27th, 2018, when a, when a perpetrator murdered 11 people and wounded six, including several Holocaust survivors. This escalation in antisemitic incidents and vitriol in society has caused anxiety, concern, and anger, which is, which as a result, has forced the Jewish community to focus more attention on security out of fear. The Jewish Federation of Greater San Gabriel and Pomona Valleys, guided by the executive director Jason Moss, serves as a Jewish voice in our community when issues arise locally and the Jewish response is needed. The Jewish Federation continues to work closely with law, with local law enforcement and organizations like the Anti-Defamation League to discuss ways to handle the situation. But I bet you guys are all wondering why I'm regurgitating this information. In March 2023, the Jewish Federation implemented a plan to combat antisemitism locally by sending letters to all city mayors and carbon copying all the council members of the 40, 48 cities they cover, including West Covina, imploring their respective cities to take the following action steps. Number one, sign the American Jewish Committee and the United States Conference of Mayors Statement to Combat Antisemitism and Join the Over 700 Mayors Who Have Already Done So. And some of that is Brea, Chino Hills, El Monte, South El Monte, to name a few, they have already signed that statement. Number two, adopt the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance Working Definition of Antisemitism. Number three, adopt a resolution denouncing antisemitism and all forms of hatred. And number four, establish a task force of representatives from various targeted ethnic and racial groups to work with the city officials to develop a plan to, to confront hatred. These letters right here, to ensure the cities have received and read these letters, Mr. Moss followed up a few weeks later, on April 18th, and again on June 29th, following the White House's launch of the United States National Strategy to Counter-Antisemitism. And since this resolution is to be brought up by the council members, discussed and voted upon, to adopt the resolution, Executive Director Moss would like to address the city mayor and all the council members as soon as possible, and prior to the vote, to reiterate the importance of this resolution and the impact it has, the impact it can have. Jason, who would happily, would be happy to entertain any questions you may hold, he encourages our city leaders to use their voices and stand with the Jewish community against antisemitism and for, for all forms of hatred. It's ironic that I'm beginning this important topic, I'm bringing up this important topic today, five days after we attended the mayor's prayer breakfast, as clergymen from different faiths and denominations sans, sans rabbi, gave positive invocations, mostly preaching peace, Jesus, Allah, God, and Mother Earth. I sincerely hope, politics aside, all of the city West Covina's council members do the ethical and moral obligation by adopting these resolutions, joining our cities.
Next speaker is R. Robinson, followed by Jim Grivitch, followed by Mr. G.
The First Circuit Court of Appeals on September 1st ruled the US FDA exceeded its authority under federal law when it advised the public against using ivermectin to treat COVID A, to treat COVID. So, we've, we've been hearing that we're being abused by criminal activity from the homeless, the criminal activity of the FDA, the criminal activity of the US Border Guards who aren't protecting our national borders, we're not even a country anymore. I mean, there's criminal activity going on everywhere. So, the, I just wanted to highlight that the Federal Appeals Court last week overturned the dismissal of, of the, of the lawsuit against the FDA. Medical doctors allege that the FDA's guidance on ivermectin interfered with the doctor-patient relationship and their ability to prescribe and approve medication off-label. One of the most unfortunate side effects of these last years of widespread experimental gene therapy is that it weakens our immune systems, the bioweapon impacts make us more vulnerable to hundreds of different conditions and diseases. So, the, our, our general population's health is, is just declining. You're gonna see that because the 300, the 484 cities in California are gonna have to spend more for fire, paramedic, and police services. The whole insurance industry is aware that all-cause mortality has spiked. We are in the middle of what's called a black swan event, that's an event that comes as a surprise. I'll, I'll listen to anyone's theory on what's going on, I have my own ideas, I think I know what's going on, but liberty, life, and happiness don't have to be curtailed by enduring a second round of lockdowns scheduled to begin in October. I mean, we're gonna be locked down again by the idiots that are running the system. People think COVID's over? If, if you have an airline ticket, get ready to start wearing your mask again, we're gonna get a, another round of this foolishness, coming, coming your way very soon. So, there's a trap being set by the World Health Organization, it's a pandemic treaty that emerged two months ago, it needs to be totally rejected by Congress, so people can write letters saying reject the treaty, reject anything that has to do with the World Health Organization, it's just, it's just bad news. Otherwise, the World Health Organization becomes your family doctor, and the First Amendment is suspended, this formula includes, we eat bugs, own nothing, and, and we'll be happy. That's a, that's a good communist agenda and a dystopian nightmare. And Congress, like everybody else, I guess, is just asleep, and they're just gonna do nothing and let it happen. Maybe we can wake up our Congress. The World Economic Forum wants to close off 30% of, of the wildlife wilderness areas, so, so people find it more difficult to enjoy the beautiful outdoors, and, and so, few people will enjoy a setting like we enjoy at West Covina's Gallister Park. Anyway, the, I've been trying for months to go through this list, it looks like I'm gonna have to wait till next month, of 20 points that describe the dystopian future we're gonna face. I'll just yield back my last 10 seconds.
Thank you.
Jim Grivitch, followed by Mr. G, followed by Bill Elliott.
I have a relatively simple request for the council today. Earlier today, I sent you an email, which I'm having her pass out, it's relative to Agenda Item 7, Employment of Personnel Rules, and specifically about the personnel rule in 6.6, employment of relatives, spouses, domestic partners. I personally spent quite a bit of time on this particular subject, because you don't know it's a problem until it happens, if you have employees or a relationship among supervisors and subordinates that are involving people living together that aren't married, it isn't covered by the rules, and yet, when there's problem in the supervision or the evaluation, there's nothing that can be done about it unless you have a rule. So, all I'm suggesting here is to add the word cohabitants, amend the. So all I'm suggesting here is to add the word cohabitants, amend the existing language to add the word cohabitants to the section, and that will cover it. In other words, not just spouses and domestic partners and relatives, but cohabitants, people who live in the same house, shouldn't be supervising each other, shouldn't be evaluating each other. I spent a lot of time on a problem like this, and ultimately, when I became a consultant, I convinced quite a few different agencies to change their rules to incorporate this one word, so that they wouldn't have to spend a lot of money and time when there's a problem. I don't know of West Covina having a problem in this area before, but when it happens, it can become a major issue. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. G., followed by Bill Elliott.
Good afternoon, I mean, good evening. First of all, councilman, Mayor Protem, nice to see you again all together. Hopefully, you've come together with standards and values that West Covina stands for. Many people moved from the city of Los Angeles to West Covina. They may still work in the city of Los Angeles. If the city of Los Angeles didn't exist, there probably wouldn't be a West Covina. So it's kind of a symbiotic oxymoron, is the way I look at it. But I'm actually a homeless advocate for the homeless people, but I'm probably one of the sternest people for it, okay? I sat here several months ago, and the city was paying some man to drive around the city for six hours, two people, taking up resources of the street, causing pollution, to hand out what he called the snack, making contact. I looked at the statistics. The only thing I remember from college, statistics, the greatest liars. You take a statistic, I use it for my advantage. Three people were in a bed. We were giving that man money to put three people in a bed for the year, utilize that resources to the police, to take control back of the city. There are sanctuary cities. Well, let's have a sanctuary city where children can play, adults can take their family to a restaurant, and they don't have to see disgusting filthy things that the city of Los Angeles promotes, lives up for, stands up for. The city of West Covina should say, hey, we're the third safest city. You know why? We respect the laws. Three strikes, you're out. You made contact with the police as a homeless person? Because they're not citizens, they're not residents, they're transients. When I was a kid, it was called a bum. Now, if that's not politically correct, tough. But you know what? Most of them are alcoholics, most of them are drug addicts, most of them understand the term "tough love." Well, you know what? Get tough on it. Don't be gruff like I am. I meant, I'm very gruff. I get told all the time, because I speak really plain. We simply utilize the resources we have, help them. Say, you want, you want to get better? Here's where you go. They contact you a third time, we're going to ask you to leave the city, because you're not here doing good for the city. I want the best for everybody. Whether we agree politically or not, I want the best for everybody. And that's the standard I was raised here in the city of West Covina, by someone who worked in the county of Los Angeles, who my family's been in the state way before the Civil War, way before there were tons of people running around. So I lived in a nice neighborhood. I live in a nice neighborhood now. People talk about discrimination was another subject brought up here. They don't even understand it. I, when a cop stopped me in front of my parents' home, and asked me what I'm doing in the neighborhood, I was happy about it. You know why? My car wasn't broken in three times. Things weren't stolen out of my home. Why? Because the police were proactive, finding out who's in the neighborhood. Most of the time, when you're a cop, they're there looking like, hey, you know what? You want to play games? I'm watching you. That's proactive. That's kind love. So they have in the back of their head that they're not going to do something, because they know somebody's watching. Body cameras, restaurants. These guys want restaurants? We want sit-down restaurants. You've talked about it, Mr. Wu. How do you do it? By making the city a sanctuary city for families to thrive and prosper. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council. My name is Bill Elliott. I want to agree with John over here about Wood Grove Park. I walked Wood Grove Park one day recently in the early morning, it was about dawn, and I was startled by the people coming out of the overgrowth around the park. It scared me. I didn't expect to see that, and they very clearly were homeless people. And I didn't check, but I know that entire park is encampment, and somebody needs to take a major interest in Wood Grove Park because the vandalism in the bathrooms, just the homeless run amok. And the homeless people that are there, the homeless people in West Covina, you know, I have empathy for all human beings, but these people are some kind of social structures taking place, and the taxpayers are down here and the homeless are up here. Regardless that they're drug addicts, they're alcoholics, they're dangerous. And it needs to be addressed in Wood Grove Park and in all our parks, but especially Wood Grove Park. The passing of Carol, you know, oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to say one more thing about the homeless in the parks. John asked the question, you know, what happened to San Francisco? What happened to Los Angeles City? What happened to Los Angeles County? I know the answer to that. Los Angeles City Council, they have 15 lying Brian Tabatabas on that city council, 15 of them. The LA County Board of Supervisors, they have five of him. And this is the problem, where people can get assaulted by homeless people in the park and not a damn thing happens. So I just wanted to say that. Regarding Carol, it's heartbreaking to lose Carol and Art, and now Carol Molner is gone. Such a tragic set of circumstances for two wonderful ladies, full of love in their heart for West Covina. Both of them were always very nice to me, and I'd like to have them back and dispatch a couple of people in the room in their place. It's probably not possible. I attended the mayor's prayer breakfast, and it was a very, I was kind of surprised. It was a very moving event. I didn't expect that. And even if it just had the sweetbreads provided by Merrill Gardens and coffee, it would have been enough because the event itself was really spectacular. So many interfaith churches came out and were represented, and it was heartwarming to see everyone come together and speak of peace. And Pastor Kelly, the police chaplain, he spoke so eloquently about family and marriage and the importance of it in our society today. It's devalued by the left. The left wants to become the daddy, kick dad out of the house and slap some lipstick on the son and call him a girl, and pay the mother monthly payments to keep the father out of the house. So that's kind of sickening to me. The food at the prayer breakfast was spectacular. It was nothing short of superb. I was stunned how good it was. Thick slices of bacon, fat, sausage, hot eggs. I don't know how they managed to get all that together out in the middle of the park, but Bun Street really stepped up. The chef was, he was fabulous. Everything was so good. Orange juice, I mean, it was, I hope to see it take place again. It was really a worthy event, and if you missed it, you know, maybe you can come next time. It was really a great thing to have in West Covina, and I hope that we continue to have positive events in West Covina like this as time goes by. There's so much negativity in the city. It's like the people outside West Covina appreciate West Covina more than the people inside West Covina. And it's kind of like, you know, if you don't like West Covina, if you hate West Covina so much, why don't you leave? Why don't you go somewhere else? Why don't you spare us all the drama? Thank you.
Thank you.
No further speaker. Cards, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Acting City Manager, would you like to respond to the public comments?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. There's a lot of comments made this evening about Wood Grove Park. It is on the agenda, so part of the item before you this evening is the landscape services for the landscape maintenance districts. And as some of the speakers mentioned, there has been a lot of deferred maintenance in those areas. So this part of the scope of this new contract will be to address that. So it's going to include the entire hillside, which the current contract does not, and we are going to be addressing those areas of concern, including Wood Grove Park. So I have it in my City's Managers' Report, just the new scope of services, so I'll be able to visualize that in a little bit. The other item was the outdoor dining for Bun Street. We appreciate you guys being a great partner. I know you guys partner with us on various events and do appreciate you guys being a business in our community. So we were able to look into AB 61. It looks like it allows cities that established ordinances for outdoor dining. The city of West Covina did not establish an ordinance, so we don't have something to extend. AB 61 does allow for cities to waive the parking requirement for those outdoor dining spaces, which we did during the pandemic, during our open-air program, and which we can continue to do once those applications are submitted. AB 61 does not remove the requirement for businesses to apply. And then the second thing, too, is the property in question, the sidewalk, is city property, so we do have to come into an agreement in regards to use of that city property for an outdoor dining space. So like I said, we're more than happy to work with you. We do want to help and assist our businesses that want to continue outdoor dining. Unfortunately, we did not, for better or worse, did not do an ordinance. We waived some code requirements during the pandemic, during the local emergency, which we cannot at this time anymore since there's no local emergency. But there is a way to do outdoor dining, and we will work with you to get that done. In regards to antisemitism, I think that I can say that if a letter was received to the mayor, we will address it. I think I can speak on everyone that we are against antisemitism, so I don't see why we would have an issue signing something like that, but it will be addressed. And I think a lot of, back to Wood Grove Park, which I said I'll be addressing in the City Managers' Report. And thank you, Win-Win. I think we're all very sad that the library won't be opened up by the end of the year, but thank you for providing those updates.
Count Wu.
Yeah, okay. Regarding the Glendora Avenue, the outdoor dining, I think due to each of the restaurant, their internal space is really not that big. So I think, plus, I think everybody understands the outdoor dining become a norm. So what we can help, okay, not only the Bun Street, but all the restaurants on that street, see what we can provide, okay, and the outdoor dining, so they can, because we really need those businesses to survive and vibrant, okay, on the Glendora Avenue. That's why we want to do, okay, the Centennial Festival, and now the Fall Festival, Moon Festival, and we just try to bring people over there to promote those businesses, because that is a very important street, okay, and that can be, hopefully, okay, a pedestrian street, people can walk over there and eat outside. I think that's what we, okay, the idea, what we can help all the businesses. And then for you, please, okay, try to set up the BID, okay, the Business Improvement District for there, so in the future, okay, you guys can have your security, so we can avoid any this smash and grab, this same thing. But at the same time, okay, we can, okay, work together and to find a solution, okay, for the business to continue to utilize any space less city on the coordinates, and that can be approved. And that's my suggestion.
Thank you.
I would like to agree with Mr. Councilman Wu. Since I was elected, I've been wanting to work on Glendora Avenue. I really want to promote the businesses there and try to have more residents and just everyone there to enjoy the bars and restaurants and so on. So we want to work together, and we are a business-friendly city, and we want to continue to work with our businesses on Glendora Avenue and other businesses as well. So let's continue to work together.
I could add, I know that through the council's direction, we've been directing more events in that area to help encourage foot traffic, so there is a, you know, a push to help support those businesses on Glendora Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to go along with my colleagues, Councilman Wu and Mayor Diaz, what would be our process that we could, you know, attempt to make this more, to make this permanent and fast-track this? You know, what is it that we, as a council, need to do to get that in front of the proper people? So we can, I think we all agree that Glendora and the outdoor dining is something that we would like to see be permanent and be a part of what our city has, right, as an attraction? I know Bun Street is well-known. It's, you know, a burger space that has won many awards. It's, you know, The Cove just had a huge celebration, you know, so there are some really attractive spaces there, and the outdoor eating spaces, something that is also very attractive. So if we can, I guess, get some direction on what we can do to have this, you know, taken care of in the proper way, so that way, Mr. Smith doesn't, you know, he can, we can go forward and do what we would like to have happen.
I was going to continue on that, and you beat me to it, but I was just going to say, if we can, we'll request for an ordinance that could be brought to us so that we can look into what other cities are doing to see that and bring forth that West Covina can create our own ordinance for the outdoor dining, for not just your business, but for all the other businesses. But that is a request. Well, I guess the whole council is making, but I was going to put in that request earlier just to...
We currently do allow outdoor dining on Glendora Avenue, so it's administrative review permit that's required and an encroachment permit, because that sidewalk is city-owned property. So there is a process now that can be applied for, to require that outdoor dining. We are working with our engineering team to identify areas along Glendora Avenue and the sidewalk area that can be utilized for outdoor dining and looking at areas that we can expand. So some areas have planters, landscaping bins, so that we can expand the outdoor dining and still comply with our building and safety codes, for example, like ADA requirements, so that there's a path of travel for residents.
Mayor Protem.
So, I mean, I guess, you know, this usually comes at the end of the agenda, so, because I think a more formal presentation for all of us to kind of understand the processes, the cost to businesses, you know, why, why maybe, you know, is there a better way, a more efficient way to go about making this more permanent? You know, at least, you know, for myself, would definitely be helpful. Like, I understand what you're saying, but then I also understand that had the small business come up, and I'm sure they've been presented what they could have done, and it seems like there's either a disconnect or it's just not maybe viable. So I guess I would want to better understand if we could get a more formal presentation to us. But I know that comes at the end of the agenda. We're jumping ahead.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. And I know that...
And I know that there was one resident that wasn't addressed in regards to La Cada. But I just wanted, well, for people who do know that I am about tough love with the homeless being through that, but I just wanted to let others know. I know we had a whole La Cada presentation. When they mean only three beds there, it doesn't, that doesn't take into consideration of the homeless that they helped out, that was able to get housing or help that is needed. Also, they all, La Cada did, including with PD code enforcement, they were able to reunite some of the homeless families with their families that don't live in the City of West Covina. So they helped with their transportation, helped with the whole reuniting so that they were able to help transport them and have a home with their loved ones. Arrest has been made on a few occasions with, La Cada does work very closely with our police. So they do, you know, 51-50 if they need be. But you have to understand that 51-50 before, they would hold them for like 72 hours, but literally, they just released them the same day. So I know I had one resident, which I had a follow-up and said, you know, what happened? They called them over, police didn't even take them. But in reality, they did take them. It's just that they were released that same night and was returned, so they didn't see that at time that they were away. But La Cada compared to our previous LASSA, they are more effective with these two compared to the LASSA, who had so many that it was ineffective. There was, I mean, I even had to follow through and call. They wouldn't do much. So La Cada does a lot more than what meets the eyes for the resident. Our police are very close with them. A lot has been done on these cases. For residents, I know we discussed Wood Grove, but, you know, for a lot of situations that you see in the city, it's not LA. And believe me, I know, it's night and day. So, you know, I am here, I love West Covina, and of course, my standards are very high for West Covina, and I wanted to keep it that level. And I do appreciate the residents who do come forth and do help out. But make those calls, report it to, you know, La Cada or the app so that La Cada can help, and that includes our PD and code enforcement that assist with that. But I just wanted to make sure that was known. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wu.
I want to be quick. Correct me if I'm wrong, okay, from the acting city managers, okay? My understanding, if we don't have La Cada, we don't provide the shelter or the bed, we cannot legally remove people from the public area, am I right?
Correct. So there's, without having the necessary number of beds, you cannot legally remove homeless. You have to be able to provide that service. We do, through La Cada, offer, they guarantee us eight beds. That does not mean that they haven't been able to provide more. It depends on the availability of other beds that they're able to get through their resources. But they do guarantee eight.
Yeah, so basically, based on this state law, okay, so we cannot legally remove any people in Cameron, okay, if we do not have a resource, okay, to help them to move to the shelter or any bed that we can provide for them. So that's the reason we need to spend a kind of budget, okay, try to provide some kind of service so we can legally, okay, and ask them to remove their belonging in the public right away on the park and this and that. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, just on that, for everybody knows about Boise v. Martin. I think Governor Newsom actually complained about it the other day, as it's federal, right? And so, you know, it makes it difficult when you don't have the percentage of beds and shelters. You know, the state is tied to providing those in order for law enforcement to do things.
Thank you. Thank you, but I know I did make a request to our city attorney in regards to the role of residency and, because, you know, my issue was having transits that come. I'd like to take care of our own homeless, yes, that is, you know, priority. But for others to just come in our city and take advantage of it, you know, I know I've asked the city to look into that, the rules and regulations in regards to that. But also, I know I put also a request to see the other, working with the other housing component, with the locals, to see if we could get that increase of bed space. But those were the two I recalled requesting, but I know we haven't got any updates with that.
That's correct, that's correct. Madam Mayor and Councilmember Kontos has requested information as well. We'll come back at the next meeting or the following, the first meeting in October, and update council on a number of homeless issues, possible resolutions, and next steps.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wu.
Okay, last thing, last thing, I promise. Okay, I think we need to request county to give our major age money, act some push potion, so we can use that budget to help the homeless population we have. So I think the request from the city manager, okay, or city attorney, see what we can request, okay, and county to give some, okay, funding that we pay for our quarter percent sales tax for since 2016. They're about, what, $20 million? We haven't gotten nothing yet, so maybe we can request them to give us some so we can take care of our local homeless. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Can we have our city managers' report, please?
Of course. We'll get it up. We'll go back. Quickly, we have some items on there. So the first item, I just wanted to remind our residents in our community, if you don't have any plans tomorrow, Wednesday, September 6th, we'll be at the Cameron Community Center for our second of two workshops on the fee schedule. The fee schedule can be found online if anyone wants to review it. And we'll be meeting, I said, tomorrow at the Cameron Community Center, so hope to see people there. Next item is our Discover West Covina is up on our website, and will be getting mailed out this week, certainly next week. So I hope everyone receives it and goes through it. There's a lot of programs and services we provide, so we encourage everyone to take a look and participate in an upcoming class. Next item is our West Covina GIS Data Hub. I'm very excited about this. It's a resource for our residents and our community members. So if you're new to the city, or you've been here a while, but you don't know what your street sleeping day is, or what your, what district you are for either council or for PD or fire, all of that information is available in that one spot, the West Covina Resource Map. If you want to know if the tree in front of your house is city-owned, it'll indicate there when the last time it was trimmed, when it's supposed to be trimmed again, and the condition of it. So it's a good resource for residents to go and just get information on their community. Next item, with some recent fires, we had our fire department help with the Happy Camp. We sent seven personnel up there to help with that fire. We also helped coverage for the Norco Fire Station for the funeral services of Assistant Chief Josh Bishop. And then we just, updates on hurricane or tropical storm, Hillary events. We didn't have very many issues, thank goodness, so. Next item, very exciting news, our splash pad is up and running. So I know it's been cloudy, but it's still a little hot, so people can go and enjoy our splash pad. Our other exciting news is our pet stations. So these are getting installed in our parks and our paseos. So if all of our pet owners can be responsible here, we have trash bags being provided and trash bins. A couple items on consent that I just wanted to highlight really quickly. The Move West Covina on the item, it's being recommended to expand from within the city to allow rides to and from the Metro and MetroLink stations to help connect riders to public transportation. And then just wanted to provide an update. So the number of participants has increased as of today. It's up to 94 individuals are participating, and it's 910 trips have been taken, and we've spent a little over 6,000 in that program so far. Next item is the personnel rules. They have not been updated since 1996, so this is a big accomplishment for our city that we are updating it to make sure that we are aligning with current legal standards and best practices. The next item is the landscape maintenance districts, which is also on your agenda. This is what I mentioned earlier, part of the landscape contract that would address Wood Grove Park as well. As you can see, on the left is what's currently there, and then on the right would be the new scope of services. So right now, it's three feet from the curb, three feet from the property line, and only up to three or four feet. The new scope includes the entire hillside up to four feet tall. So, and it'll get rid of dead bushes and dead trees up to a certain height. So that's going to make a big difference. It will get some of that, rid of that green landscaping, but we, it'll be a process to get it to look nice. And once we do that, then we'll be able to better maintain it moving forward. So there will be an initial cleanup where there'll be some less, some more barren spots. Next item is body-worn cameras is on your consent calendar for approval. This is a very exciting process. We got the grant into 2021 Bear of Justice Assistance Grant to move forward with getting body-worn cameras. The benefits of body-worn camera technology has been proven and supported by the city's goals of increasing transparency, building trust within our community, and improving the public safety officer, or safety of our police officers and the public. We did an RFP, and staff is recommending going with Axon Enterprises. So it'll be body-worn cameras and in-car camera system. For the first two years of purchase cost of the system, which totals a little over $600,000, will be no cost to the general fund. In year three, the police department will be requesting general fund or other special revenue funds to be budgeted for the ongoing cost of that, the cameras. The next item is the capital improvement project at Cortez Lighting. So in June, we came before you to purchase Musco Lighting, which is top-tier lighting for a sports field. Tonight, the agenda is to get the contractor hired so that they can install it. The supplies, materials of the lighting should be delivered November of this year, with start of construction in January and hoping to finish in May of 2024. Next item is the Centennial Estate of the City. So it's on the end of the month, September 28th. It's really an event for the community, our stakeholders in our community, and we hope to see everyone there. And then lastly, just some upcoming events. We have District Four Community Meeting with Councilwoman Oli Kontos Saturday, September 16th, 8:00 a.m. at the West Grove Park. West Covina Firefighter Association dugout cookout Saturday, September 9th, 8:00 a.m., and that's at the Sportsplex. Tetcha Truck, Saturday, September 23rd, here at the Civic Center Parking Lot. The State of the City I just mentioned, September 28th. The very first annual Moon Festival, Saturday, September 30th, on Glendora Avenue, from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And then District One's Community Meeting with Mayor Protem and Tabatabai Saturday, October 14th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at Del Norte Park. And then our Cartober Fest, October 21st, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Eastland Center. So that's it for me this evening.
Thank you. Okay, and we're going to move on to our consent calendar. Council, does anyone want to pull? Councilwoman.
Five?
Okay.
Number eight.
Eight.
Number eight, please.
Madam Mayor, number seven, please.
Seven.
I'm not going to pull, but I just want to be registered as a no on number two.
Okay.
Number eleven?
Yeah. Okay, will somebody make a motion to approve all the items on the consent calendar?
Can we confirm, sorry, the items that have been pulled?
Five, seven, eight, and eleven.
Okay. Five, seven, eight, and eleven. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve all the consent items except for five, seven, eight, and eleven?
So move.
And there's three.
And a no on number three.
No on number two.
Two.
Yeah. And, okay, Councilman Konto moved the motion.
Okay.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilman Kontos, a second by Councilman Wu, to approve consent items with the exception of five, seven, eight, and eleven, and registering a no vote for Mayor Protem for item number two. Before I do vote, I'm going to read the title of the ordinances into the record. We have two ordinances for adoption. The first is a consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2515. And the title of the ordinance is "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, to amend Chapter 26 of the West Covina Municipal Code to Allow Alcohol, Beer, and Wine Sales at Service Stations and Finding." The ordinance is exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SECA Guideline, Section 15061b3. Our second ordinance is ordinance number 2516, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, Adopting an Amended Military Equipment Policy Governing the Use of Military Equipment pursuant to Assembly Bill 481." Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, who pulled five?
I did.
So who will be answering my questions for number five?
I will be answering questions.
Well, first, I know you, on your manager's report, it says it's going to be completed by May 2024, but on the report, it's to be completed within two months, and it commences in November 2023.
I think we just were able to get a better date for the city manager's report today.
Okay, so it'll be completed next year in May. A quick question, this, we're going with FEC Electric, Inc., correct?
Yes.
The lowest bidder, that's where we're going with? Have they installed Musco Lightings before?
Um, if I may. I'll have Roxanne assist it. The chair, if I may, yes, FEC is, has worked with Musco Lighting before.
Okay, and then, do they have warranty? I was just wondering, you know, if you have any issues with the lighting, who handles, who will handle it? Because I know in our city, it's like we call on the electrician, but then I was wondering what their warranty consists of.
Musco Lighting does have a warranty with them. Those specs are not in front of me today, but yes, they do.
Okay, and then, a quick question. How often are the field lights used, generally speaking?
I'd be happy to answer that. Through the chair, if I may. Really, it's going to depend on the time of year. When you take a look at football season, football season typically runs July through November, depending on how well the individual team does through December, but you're also getting into your darker and colder months. That same space at Cortez Park is also utilized by Little League as well. Was it, West Covina American Little League utilizes that space, and so they would also have the opportunity to take advantage of those lights. So those park, that park space is used heavily. Little League tends to begin, they might start getting organized in January, but they're really starting to get out there. February, March, it is a springtime sport with some winter ball activity. So really, your Cortez Park is utilized five, six, seven days a week.
And then this is going to be the same program where you call it in and schedule all the Musco Lighting over the phone or on the computer, correct?
Musco Lighting has a few different ways that you can go about putting in service requests or scheduling lights, whether it be through an app, there's mobile device, there's apps for mobile devices, just like you mentioned, computer. And then, of course, if you do need to pick up the phone and make a phone call, staff can certainly do that.
But I love Musco Lighting. They've been very great to us, and I'm glad that they're coming in onboard, so thank you.
Councilwoman Wu.
Okay, how many light we're going to replace? We have a football field, and we have a baseball field also, and we have a park. Okay, so, okay, when you want to install replacement, okay, they all heavy-duty power bill to us. So right now, I think it's a good idea to replace the LED light, but the point is, how many light we replace? And second thing, okay, I know we already... And second thing, okay, I know we already approved the budget based on last time, and not just for installation. So, okay, these budgets, I understand last time come from COVID-19, so it not doesn't hit too much on our general fund. But still, okay, the next question would be, we still have another 15 park, okay, including the, okay, sport plaques. Okay, they don't have LED, and that will cost city a lot of power bill. So how, how we can address that issue after we done with Cortez Park? So the first question is, how many light we're going to replace? And why take till May, can we get this done a little bit earlier? Okay, just a question.
So there's going to be seven field light poles that will be replaced with new field lights, and then seven light poles that will be retrofitted with new fixtures. So a total of 14.
So totally 14 LED light, basically for the field, right? Meaning they can play the nighttime.
For the two baseball fields and the multipurpose field, the baseball field.
Football field and the baseball field, the Little League over there, I think Bruin, or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, so totally 14?
Yes.
To replace this 14 light, okay, will cost a quarter million dollars, 230 something.
If I may, the agreement that's before you for consideration is the agreement with FEC Electrical. So City Council has already approved an agreement.
Understood.
For the purchase with Musco Lighting. So the cost, the total cost is more than the 235, or excuse me, the 233,500 that's in here. This is, this report just covers the FEC. I kind of want to weave this into your, to one of your other questions, if I may. This particular project has been a part of the city's CIP, Cities Capital Improvement Program. And this is when this particular project came up on the schedule. There are other parks and other opportunities that we certainly can look into. Another project that I can think of is Friendship Park, with some enhancements and lighting, especially to illuminate the grassy areas at night because there are part, excuse me, pockets of darkness. And we want to really focus on the safety over at that park. So we're utilizing the CIP as a planning tool so that we are being responsible with our, with our funds, so that we can plan for the future. It's just that this was the project that was currently scheduled to take place.
Got it, okay. And then I think this is a, okay, great to studying, okay, modernize our lighting, our city with all this park, with all this lighting. And the nighttime, I see so many light on, then I see the dollar bill going away to our city general fund. So we need to find a way, try to, okay, update to LED, maybe cut, cut 70, 70 to 80% of all this heavy duty electric bill. So I think this is a good thing, but the next thing is how soon we can continue. I know this is on our, now on our agenda, but the last thing I want to mention is, since so many people utilize, rent the place, are we charging them so we can, okay, get some of our, okay, all these costs, they can share a user play, okay? So don't subsidize by taxpayer.
I'm going to answer your question in two parts. So the first, so you're asking about reservations about rentals of the field space.
Correct.
While the field spaces do have, just like the park pavilions, do have a fee associated with it, we do have something called the Sports Council. And the Sports Council operates under bylaws. And through these bylaws that were approved by the city council a number of years ago, there have been certain agreements that have, that were established, and understandings that were established, that allows our youth sports groups to utilize our city parks without a fee. Now, those youth leagues are required to meet certain types of benchmarks, if you will. So whether that's residency requirements, whether that's proof of nonprofit status, all of those things come into play. And if they are in compliance, then the bylaws allow the city to go ahead and to waive those use fees. However, when the, if, let's say that a particular league does not come into compliance, we're not saying that, hey, you can't use the space. What we're saying is, you have to pay for the space. And those bylaws are very specific as to which parks are available for that type of utilization.
I think possible this would be a last item for the Mother Ma'ayi to let the city look into the bylaw and into all the usage of all the parks. Since we're going to spend tremendous money, a budget, to capital improvement, to update all the park, so we need to make sure user pay, okay, there's no choice. Because, okay, you cannot continue have our taxpayers subsidized and the people doing that thing. So hopefully, we can be fair, okay? And let everybody have a chance to play. But at the same time, the player, any of the league, they have to help out with how the, all the bill that city has paying for so long. So anyway, that's, I will go to the Mother Ma'ayi at the end. Right, am I right, City Attorney? I can, okay, thank you. I'm right, okay.
Okay, we're done with, do we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Viado to approve item number five, "Consideration of Construction Agreement for Cortez Park Sports Lighting Field, Project Number 22016." Councilwoman, Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem, Tabata By?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
Okay, let's move on to item number seven.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My congratulations to the HR team for the wonderful revisions to our personnel manual, considering how long it's been since we've modernized. So that is just really a wonderful thing to have happened. I wanted to, to ask if, if the acting HR Director can describe the incorporation of progressive disciplinary procedures to ensure that whenever there are issues of performance, that there is a system for addressing that in, in an escalating way based, based on specific situations?
Through the Chair, if I may. The proposed rules do include a developed, a clear language on progressive discipline, which specify and clarify actual steps of the discipline procedures. And these procedures were actually shared with the labor groups as part of the process of review in these rules.
Thank you. So, so because of these provisions, just to make it clear for the public, that means that this is all done through the city, the acting city manager or whoever holds that position to administer this, and it is completely away from, from the hands of, of, of any of us here on City Council?
For those positions that do not report to City Council, that is correct.
So that means that under these new rules, as revised, the only ability that we have when it comes to personnel is to hire and fire the, the, the city attorney and the city manager?
There are, the City Council also appoints or confirms appointments of all department heads.
Okay, and the other thing is, earlier, Mr. Grivage during oral communications brought up the incorporation of cohabitation as, as an additional small friendly amendment. Is it possible, and I guess this may be directed to our city attorney, maybe, is that, is it possible for us to incorporate that as a friendly amendment to, or just to ask that the spirit of those recommendations be incorporated? Or is there a deeper procedure for facilitating that?
In order to amend what we have before you today, we'd need to go back through all of the parties that reviewed it before, such as the collective, the labor groups and the HR Commission, to kind of vet through that process. This document is more so a living document that should be updated annually or reviewed each year. So I would recommend that that be something that we look towards to incorporate in the next updated amendment, which would come, should come annually for review.
So for that to be considered, does that require City Council action? Or is that something that is within your purview? In terms of incorporating the cohabitation provision modifications?
Ultimately, the cohabitation would be under City Council's purview. However, the process of these whole rules went through the labor groups first, and then HR Commission, and then to City Council, which would be the proposed method for any amendments to the rules.
So at this juncture, would it be, if, let's say I'm supportive of that recommendation, can, would we as a council need to vote on that and then take it to you? And then you negotiate with appropriate parties, or does it come the other direction? I just want to make sure to follow procedure.
Madam Mayor, I would suggest, moving forward, what we have in front of you tonight, this has been vetted by Labor Council, it has gone to all the employee associations. And we can look at the cohabitation issue, and if it's necessary, and, and our Labor Council believes that it should be changed, we will bring that back to you and take it back to the association groups.
Okay, that'll be fine, thank you. No more questions.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Cantos, a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado, regarding Agenda Item Number Seven, "Consideration of Personnel Rules on Employer-Employment Relations Resolutions." There's two resolutions. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem, Tabata By?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0.
Okay, let's move on to item number eight, Councilman Wu?
Yeah, okay, and the reason I put this, I just need some clarification regarding the, when you say job classification, okay, for the landscape maintenance and the lead worker and maintenance supervisor. My understanding, I think we already have superintendent, supervisor, or this is totally different, okay, under description or classification. So would you please share some light?
Through the Chair, if I may.
Are you over here?
For the landscape maintenance lead worker, we have a maintenance lead worker position that is very generic. It also has different requirements. Staff wanted to make this specific to landscape so that we can actually recruit for people who actually have a landscaping background to actually work on our rightways, parks, possibly the sportsplex. And so it is a more specific position and classification specific to landscape. But it basically mirrors, it has the same salary schedule as the maintenance lead worker. For the maintenance supervisor, we're actually taking it the opposite direction. We have a street maintenance supervisor position that is very specific to streets. And we want to be able to expand that person to be able to work in multiple different disciplines, which the current classification is, again, very specific. So this is, classification will mirror the street maintenance supervisor, however, opening it up so that it can recruit the appropriate person to do the work needed.
I'm kind of confused, because I know Public Work Department, basically, they have maybe 30 some staff right now, okay? And they have some, okay, office staff, and they have a field, okay, of our maintenance group. It's that they already have, they basically in charge of, that's what Raoul's around, or my Chris is around, when we have some issue, and they're running around trying to help to, to solve the issue, okay, and respond to the resident complaint, okay? For example, trash, okay, street issue and this and that, or flooding issue due to last storm we have. They use the pump and make our city is very safe. So is that already have the Public Work staff already have all this special, okay, skill? Am I right, or no, we don't have? So we need to have a new, okay, and specification, okay, for the landscape maintenance for some job description?
So there are people that have the skills to do landscape maintenance lead worker within higher classifications, like you're saying, the superintendent level or the deputy director level. But when you get down to the specifics of the lead worker level, who's leading a specific crew on site, we don't have a specification that directly deals with that level of work. The lead worker classification that is generic also includes a Class A license, which we wouldn't necessarily want to, want to force onto a landscape maintenance worker who won't be operating heavy equipment, for example. So this is specific to that line of work.
Got it, but, but still, we only have a 20, 30 staff in the Public Work. And then now, if we get so many supervisor, my, my understanding, we have a deputy director we tried to recruit due to previous Raoul, okay, resign, retire, okay? So we need to recruit that position. And then we have a superintendent already there as a supervisor. So now, my worry is just, are we going to build so many general, but we don't have enough crew? Because it looks like we are going to build a lot of supervisor, then who is going to do the real work?
That is a fair question.
We only have 20, 30 people.
And I will answer it from like a best practice side, and then defer to Roxanne, if I may, for any of the department specifics. So you do want to establish a span of control for each supervisor that you have. So you wouldn't want a supervisor over just 30 people. So as we go down the ranks, you need to have it sort of grouped so that certain people are reporting to one person, so that there is that level, and it doesn't get overwhelming for one individual to be having 20, 30 people asking them questions on one specific job.
My last question would be, how many supervisor we need in this not such a big department or a division? Right now, currently, we have a 20-some, not even 30, and I think, okay, couple of them are office staff. So we down to not too many soldier, so how many supervisor we need?
So if I can try to answer that question. So right now, we have our Public Services Department, which encompasses maintenance and community services. And so that includes the Deputy Public Services Director, then a superintendent, and then a recreational supervisor, and then community services coordinator. So there's two divisions within that department.
So I think, I remember before 2018, previous, previous city manager changing this, commingling the two departments, and now we're confused, who is who in charge? Who is responsible? I think accountability need to be there. So I think possible we need to bring back the, the, the Public Work, Community Service independently, okay, so everybody to be responsible of their duty, okay, of the street or community service, et cetera, et cetera. So in that way, okay, otherwise they say, hey, this is potential my department, or this is all my department. So anyway, I can understand, okay, where you're coming from. But the thing is, we, the Public Work, we already have supervisors and, okay, futures, okay, deputy. And now we're kind of mingling, okay? And so.
Assistant City Manager, would you like to say something?
I would, if you wouldn't mind, if I may chime in. Thank you, Mayor. Through the Chair, if I may, I think Councilman Wu and Acting City Manager Morales both brought up some valid points about the division of responsibilities in the Public Services Department. Just like the Acting City Manager had indicated, Community Services and the Maintenance Divisions, both divisions make up Public Services. In regards to what's before you tonight, the landscape maintenance lead worker, we have lead workers currently. What we're doing is we're creating more flexibility so that we can, we can assign duties and responsibilities to individuals that aren't necessarily at the deputy director level. You don't necessarily want a deputy director out on the field changing irrigation parts. It's, it's a waste of city funding. In regards to the supervisor position, this particular position, again, would allow for flexibility and would help to increase just the, the overall efficiency of the department as far as the supervision is concerned. Remember, we're working towards that six, seven days a week possibly operation. So you do need those extra eyes. I think now, more than ever, we're, we're doing what we can to honor our commitments to our residents to address our deferred maintenance issues. The LMDs is on, you know, your, your agenda tonight, too. The council has really taken a stance to tighten things up. But to your point, going back to your point, Councilman Wu, you, you bring up a valid point. You have two divisions, and these two divisions are both heavily taxed under Public Services. And my guess, and may perhaps I'm speaking a little bit out of turn, but my guess is if we did an assessment, and we sat down, and we did an evaluation, and we brought that to you, my guess at this point is that we would recommend separating the two divisions into two different departments. That's my guess without, without doing an assessment.
Agree with you, we just try to link and mean the department so people responsible, accountable for their position. So it's not commingling, okay, their job descriptions. So, so in that way, sound like another Mother Ma'ayi at the end, okay? So, so to check into the, yeah, okay, so to get city to look into how to make sure, okay, the accountability you will be to the, okay, supervisor or the staff, and to be focused in their job, rather than they get pulled for something else, okay? And which in that way, okay, I think the city possible. possible we're running better in that way. Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve, but I will reserve my right to have Madam Mayor at the end.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu, a second by Councilman Kontos to approve item number eight, Consideration of New Job Classifications and Specializations for Landscape Maintenance Lead Worker and Maintenance Supervisor. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Tabatiba?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes five zero.
Great. Okay, let's move on to item number eleven. I pulled that. My question is, I noticed that it says Landscape and Maintenance Services for Landscape Maintenance Districts and Sportsplex Coastal Sage and Shrub Areas. So my question is, I thought that the residents pay for the landscape maintenance districts through their property taxes. And so my question is, why are we including the Sportsplex Coastal Sage to be maintained by that?
Okay, I'll answer, and then Roxanne can help. But so, yes, the districts are funded through a special assessment on those properties. And so those monies have to be used for the benefit of those residents paying those assessments. The way that this is broken down is based on the size of the landscape maintenance district. That portion of that contract goes towards, comes from that LMD. And so while it includes services to the Sportsplex, the residents paying for those LMDs are not paying for the services that are being provided at the Sportsplex. And it's included in the fiscal impact which amounts come from which accounts.
Okay, so, can you help me?
Yes.
Explain this?
So, out of LMD one, a hundred and, roughly a hundred and thirty thousand will be paid out of, for that contract from LMD one, roughly twelve thousand for LMD two. Four hundred and twelve, a little bit over four hundred and twelve thousand from LMD four, which is one of the larger districts, and that's why that's the larger portion. And then a little bit over sixty-three thousand for LMD six, and a little bit over seventy-eight thousand for LMD seven. The Sportsplex will only, their portion is a little bit over seventy-three thousand.
Okay, I see that here, but how, I'm just wondering, why did we include it in this agenda and not separate it so that it's clear that we're not spending those residents' tax dollars on the Sportsplex?
I believe the timing of the request for proposals and it was included in the same contract previously. That is a very valid point. And moving forward, we'll probably be separating the contracts for the LMDs and for other services.
Okay. Councilman Wu?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Okay, I want to follow up, okay, the question, I agree with Mayor, okay, this is, because this is our number sixteen park, okay, we have a sixteen park, Sportsplex, okay, from the taxpayers' money on the, we develop agency, it's our park. So it's not a private entity, it's not, okay, somebody want to sell it, we cannot sell it. This is belong to the resident, hundred twenty thousand, our population is their park, number sixteen, okay. Just before we give contract out to the Big League Dream, but now due to their abandoned place, dah dah dah, now we pick up the pieces, so we fix it. And now I think it's pretty vibrant, but I think that should be separate with the maintenance district. It should be including, okay, on the, my understanding, okay, the, okay, maintenance district, all those resident, they pay additional amount of property tax, like HOA, owner association, okay, to help the common area. So same thing too, okay, for the people pay, okay, additional amount, that is try to keep their hillside, keep their common area. It shouldn't include in the Sportsplex, this is a big area, okay, and it's kind of in the wrong, okay, and put the budget, even a thirty thousand, I don't think we even need to, we have, we can spend a dime to the people pay the taxes, okay, on their district.
It convolutes it because it's under the same contract, but the funding is separate. And like I said, it's a very valid point. Moving forward, we will separate those contracts so that there's no confusion or room for.
Correct. Make it clear to each district paying their fair share. For example, the old park, that we have more resident, they're paying, okay, the additional property tax. I think we last time, we, on our hearing, we have a one point three million dollar annually from those property, that we're taking care of the common area. And those common area, okay, since I walk in the neighborhood, including District Four, okay, District, okay, and the five, up on the north and the south, okay, those hillside is really for twenty, thirty years, obsolete for a long time. It's the previous city council kicked the can down to the road. I think it's about time for we pick up the, put on our shoulder, make sure this fire hazard or this overgrown hill, dead tree in all this neighborhood, okay, need to be removed and cleared, okay. And I think this, how soon we can get this, if we approve tonight, how soon we can, I know this is a massive, massive, okay, area. Do you have a timeline that how we approve tonight, when we can start this clean up? This is a major, if we can get this done, it's a major achievement, okay, to keep our residents safe. Yeah, go ahead.
Before we, before we do that, would you, we actually do have representatives from merchants, who is the recommended contractor with us tonight. If you would like us to invite them up, if you have any questions. Okay, so I'd like to invite up both Patrick Healy and Cesar Trujillo to come on up.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, you know, one of the biggest issues we had here is that we can't seem to maintain our hillsides in these districts. And so we want to make sure that you're able to handle cleaning up that area, removing all that brush that causes fires and that a lot of our residents are very concerned about. And I just wonder how soon we can get these districts worked on.
If we start the contract November first, and we have eighteen months to get it in compliance, and then at that point, it's just maintenance.
Okay.
You, there was a comment from several of your residents about Wood Grove.
Yes.
And, you know, they, they're, they're talking about the area that's out towards the street where you do have a large encampment, and they're constantly breaking irrigation, chopping down things in improper manner. So what we're going to do is come in there and get that stuff individualized, so you can't hide behind it anymore. The pictures you saw up here, the after's not very pretty, but that's right after we cleaned it out. Within six months, a lot of it grew back, and now we're keeping it trimmed down, and it's green again.
I see. So I'm wondering, are you, will you be removing trees? Because that Wood Grove area is full of trees, and, I mean, it's beautiful, but unfortunately, it's unsafe.
Yes, there may be some trees removed, but most of what we're doing is going to be cutting down. For example, shadow oaks on the east side as it curves around the park. You have sidewalk that's twelve feet tall, the plants that are growing there. It feels terrible when you're walking that area, and it's a little bit on the other side of the street, too. That's all going to be brought down so that we can keep it at four feet, which is going to give you all of a sudden an open feeling, like you see the hills, you can see the trees across the street, you know, the trees up near the residents there. It's going to be much better.
Okay. Councilman Wu?
Yeah, okay, I have been walking entire south sides, okay, and I see the overgrown, okay, I see some of your workers show up, okay, because the time we don't have a contract, okay, you only do some train, a little bit.
We only do like five feet.
Correct, correct. Correct, okay, and you can, I've been yelled at big time, okay, they say why the city hasn't taken care their hill, okay, look at their hill has not been, okay, and taken care. Hopefully, okay, we approve tonight, and then this thing can be done and then to, so year and, year and a half, we're going to do eighteen months?
They're anticipating it'll be eighteen months to get all of the hillsides up to this new scope. There's ways that we can work with the vendor in trying to expedite or focus on areas that are higher priority.
So you cannot shorten the time? This is eighteen months is the best you can do?
No, there's a, there's money out there for twelve months, but it's a lot more money.
Oh, okay, they forget it, okay, so, I don't have the money to pay you that much, okay, so if as long as you can get it done within the, eighteen months go fast, okay, it will go fast, okay, and anything we can afford, we don't want to over using, okay, their reserve and the city general fund, okay, so we need to work with you. And the, and the second thing, you saw it, all this common area with PSL, with the hillside and with Ama, you see Ama, there are a lot of encampment, okay, you know what I'm talking about, right? It's growing like a jungle.
Yes.
And a lot of people, their backyard, the hill, it's jungle.
Now they're backing up, they're getting through the bushes and backing up behind it. Now we get that all down, you're going to be able to see into that area.
So all the district, like including this contract?
Yes.
All the hillside, everything, okay?
Yes. Mike? All of the, all of the districts are included in this, right?
Yes, all seven districts are included.
Seven district, all the hillside, all this hill close to people's home, because before the resident told us, okay, the quarterly will come to train, okay, back to the hill, but never happened for this four years. So something happened.
It's been quite a long time in that, it's a long time, yeah.
All the four years.
Twenty years since.
Twenty years since?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a jungle growing west of Vina. Okay, so, so got it. So we are going to make this thing, okay, and get this thing done with the hillside train, PSL to be clean, trimmed down, so people won't hide in. People walking that common area, you don't want something jump, jump out, okay?
It's like the people were saying about Wood Grove, it's, it's true. When you're walking in there, it feels like you're trapped. And as you get closer to that smaller hill that's, that's sort of to the east.
Possible all the park, okay, or a common area in the south side like that. So hopefully, we can trim down. Okay, last question?
Just, I wanted to correct, it's five districts, not seven.
Five district. Oh, yeah, yeah, five, two, two is ninety-six.
Right.
Six and seven, though, are a lot smaller than the other ones, and they aren't near as bad a shape.
Correct. I think the north side, on the hillside north, and the south side with all this common area between the houses, okay, in the middle of this common area, like jungle, okay, I think you know what I'm talking about, you, I think you survey already. Last question, not try to not trusting you, but everything, we need to have a termination clause. We approve what they think if they didn't perform, what kind of a termination clause we have?
Our standard one is thirty day termination clause.
Right, it's a month to month, basically, but we have a four, is it three year or five year? I don't remember.
We, we want to keep you, if you do your good job, we're not trying to like, we need to protect the city in case you don't perform.
That's the way it works.
We, we have, we have mechanism, we can just say, I'm sorry, your name, please?
My name's Patrick.
Patrick, I say, hey, Patrick, sorry, you sucks, okay, you, okay, we terminate you. But other than that, if we, you're doing great job, I'm going to check you out, okay, and check, okay, with city see when you're going to train, I'm going to drive through to see you really train, and now we ask the city, the resident to give us a report, say, hey, are you guys really doing your job? Okay, to check and balance, make sure you perform, because we pay you top dollars. Hopefully, we live happily after, okay? You do your job, we pay you, and you left into the bank. But thank you so much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Kontos?
I realize it's our prerogative with regard to priority, but is it safe to say that, that Wood Grove Park will be, will be given a top priority in light of the concerns of safety that were brought up by residents this evening, guys?
I was told that that's going to be the first place we go.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to see a timeline or a work order progress, or I don't even know what you call it, but I want to know exactly where they're at, where they're starting and where they're going to be at. Take a ride.
Once, we have a timeline, we will, we can provide that.
Thank you.
We'll probably be working to notify the residents of the new scope. As I mentioned, it will be barren, and it'll take some time to grow back and look lush and green again to the new scope level. So we'll be trying to, you know, notify the residents of, of those changes that are coming up. But we will definitely share the timeline. And as you mentioned, Wood Grove Park will be a top priority.
I think it's really important to let the residents know that it's going to be bare for a while, but it's for their safety, and I think that's important. I noticed that there were some high bushes, like you said, fourteen feet probably, and they create tunnels. It's amazing. So let's see what you find, what kind of treasures.
Last question?
Councilman Wu?
Last question, is they including the tree, right? Including dead tree?
No.
No, no tree?
Using the trees, all we're going to do to trees is lift them. So we're going to lift them up a little bit, and then that would be a different contract.
So got it, so on the tree, so they're not doing the tree trimming, they're not doing the cutting the tree, so we still need to find people to do the tree.
The plan for this year is to do an RFP for tree trimming services for the LMDs. We currently don't have one. It was, it's been as a needed, as needed basis.
So the basis is do the shrubbery and overgrown vegetation, so we still need to find the dead tree, okay, remove the dead tree in the, a lot of area that there's a fire hazard, this giant tree, eucalyptus tree, it grows so huge and big and endanger people's property, okay, and this our city tree, so that's, that's not including your contract?
No.
Ah, damn, okay, I would think about it's including. All this eucalyptus tree is giant, okay, but, but, but Alice, there's something going on, we really need to trim all this hill, but thank you.
I'm looking forward to see the change. Thank you. Anyone?
I move the motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu, a second by Councilman Kontos for Consideration of Award of Request for Proposals, number six one dash zero two one, for Landscape and Maintenance Services for Landscape Maintenance Districts and Sportsplex Coastal Sage and Shrub Areas. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Tabatiba?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes five zero, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Let's move on to.
One, two, three.
We have no, I don't think we have any of that, anything, nothing to report? City Council request, Mother May Ayes?
Yep, okay, I'm going to keep my promise, okay, on the, the first one is looking to the, okay, and the review, huh? Okay, review our, all the league in using our park, since, okay, first thing, okay, looking to the potential upgrade of our sixteen park with LED light, see we can find, find the funding, okay, and see which park we go first. We now we take care of the Cortez Park, and then now we have to go to another fifteen park one by one, okay, find the funding. Second thing is, since we, okay, fixed up all this, spent a lot of city resource, then hopefully we can basically, and have all the league, okay, they utilize our, okay, and the, the FLC, how can they, okay, help out? And we maybe have to review the bylaw by city council from the city point of view, okay, update, since we update our rule for, since nineteen ninety, we haven't done it. And regarding our council, sport council and all this league bylaw, we haven't get any update yet. So I think we need to get update, and we need to, okay, make sure all the proper documentation that we provide to the city, so we can kind of clean up all these things to make sure everybody play fair, okay, and into the city, and city can basically not sub the die, okay, and the taxpayers' money for the user play and that kind of point of view. So this is first, Madam May I? Okay, and do I need to second or?
Yes.
Okay, do I have, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with my colleague with regard to the, the league issue. I support the rest of the Mother May I, but I worry that, that if we are to even look into imposing costs on the league, that that would be passed on to our, on to the families that are already, families have a lot of difficulty already in, in getting their kids to participate in organized sports. And so if we impose financial, these financial obligations on, on the leagues, and they're going to pass that on to the, to the families, and that could affect their ability to play. And especially these days, when we want to encourage greater participation in organized sports as a way for kids to be occupied and to really be busy, I worry about that impact. So I don't know, since it was a multi-part Mother May I, how that works, but.
Let me, let me quickly, it's a Mother May I to look into it. Okay, so it not necessarily we're going to impose the fee to them, it's that looking to, do we have a way, because we haven't done this for so long, about all this bylaw and all this fair with each of, okay, 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 ballpark, okay, the league. So hopefully, we can kind of, we tried to do this couple, four years ago, okay, and but never really, okay, clean it up, okay, this has been something like our obsolete hillside that we haven't done and looking to it. So just have the city to look into the update and modernize, okay. to it, so just have the city to look into the update and modernize, okay, all the league, and, because they need to have a nonprofit to get this wave of the fee, so meaning we need to have a documentation and this and that, so this is how about mother may I, have city look into it, and at the same time, so this is two part, okay, one part is looking to funding for all our sitting park, second part is looking to the modernize our league in each of the park, and see how we can clean up all this documentation that we are lack of right now.
Our assistant city manager would like to say something.
I think to, to councilman, to the chair if I may, through Councilman Wu's point, Councilman Kontos, what it sounds like to me that staff's approach is going to be, we're going to bring the bylaws before the council to give you a briefing, so that there's an understanding of how that works, in addition to that, give you a status update as to which leagues are currently in compliance with the documentations that are required per the bylaws, I think this is in the, within the same vein that Mayor Protem Tabatabai brought up, wanting the review of the application process for the, for the encroachment permits to outdoor dining, it's not so much a, yes, we're going to do this, no, it's a, this is what we currently have, and this is where we stand, that, that's my understanding of what the direction is.
They still have to come to the city council with their, okay, and the information to us, to look into how change this and that, and we need to either accept this or reject, so we can argue, but this is just a mother may I to look into it, okay, and hopefully we can have the city to look into all these years of obsolete, haven't been updated for, I don't know, 20, 30 years, so hopefully we can look into how to do it, so anyway, this is my mother may I, okay, and see we can look into it, no, no.
Sorry.
Sorry, okay, this is, it's just a mother may I, okay, I hope you understand. Yes, okay, but, but you can talk to the staff, okay, and talk, we, we just try to guard this, so very complicated, okay, and a lot of interest, okay, a lot of people are fighting for the fairness, but we just try to, hopefully we can clean it up, with all the fairness for all the children can play equally for all the ballpark, so not monopolized by one group, hopefully we can get all this information, okay, to, and kind of get this modernized, and get all the documentation, and that's what the resource that we have to, again, it's a low mother may I, I just want to make it clear, we just want the city to provide information to how to update our current, our situation and book, and the bylaw, okay, and bring back to city council for consideration.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman?
Just for clarification, that mother may I scope, does that, or does that include or not include the possibility of passing along costs to the leagues, I just need that clarification, so I understand what we're voting on.
I believe that was included in the review of the bylaws and the field use policy.
Okay, thank you.
I think, okay, everything is possible, so we don't restrict it, okay, the fee or no fee, nonprofit, profit, travel, travel, ballpark, ball league, okay, all this, since we are doing the fee schedule, and then now, but we know a nonprofit can give wave, but if they provide the documentation, so hopefully not people using the, okay, but not provide a nonprofit, but they making profits with the city, go ahead.
And if I may too, I think just hearing again the feedback, when you do an assessment, you're doing a comprehensive report, so you're putting, just like you said, Councilman Wu, all of the different possibilities, and when you, when you articulate those possibilities and you put them in writing, you're also saying, what are the advantages and disadvantages to that, so it's not just advantages in the sense that, hey, this, we're going to be collecting a fee for something, it is also, okay, there's a disadvantage, perhaps, like Councilman Konto said, there's an undue burden on some of the youth, so all of that would be discussed in a, in an overview and assessment in that report.
Let, let me separate the mother may I, so Mr. Kanto can easily to decide yes or no, okay, first, first one is city looking to the funding, okay, upgrade all our, okay, all the park, okay, we can change all the LED to save the energy, this is my first may I, do I have a second, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, can I have a roll call?
Is there any objection?
No objection.
We're prioritizing the parks with funding sources.
Correct, okay.
Got it.
Okay, do we have any objection, no, do we need, no roll call?
Understood.
Okay, so the second one is a city to look into, since we have update, upgrade, okay, update our, okay, and youth council, the sport, okay, and to, to, okay, to go to the attorney to look into all the bylaw, to update our current, how to use, and who is qualified, and to make it fair for everybody can use the park, and, but of course, we want to reserve the current ballpark, okay, league, and to utilize the space, but we need to make sure that, okay, all information can be updated, and provide all the information to city council to, to review, this is my mother may I, do I have a second?
So to clarify, does, Madam Mayor, that, that does or does not include, uh, penal, I mean, financing the leagues, I'm just...
I, I think they will including everything, but will be bring to city council to review and to see, want to accept or decline regarding any suggestion from the, so we don't tie up the city end, so looking to on how to utilize the park, that will be including, okay, nonprofit, don't use the fee, or there's any ballpark traveling, they rental, okay, they have to pay the fee, okay, if they, if we city have to pay for the utility, and upgrade all this, okay, facility.
Can I, can I add?
Go ahead.
Thank you, I actually had requested this a while back, and it is a comprehensive study, because back then, well, still today, we have certain leagues that were supposed to have a mutual trade-off, they, you know, they do certain things for the, the park that waive certain fees, but now, you know, depending on who runs them, depending on the organization, some of those trade-offs is not equally fair, and then ending up having our city use up a lot of their, their hours, their additional fees, and everything that is put in, so it was not a fair balance, so I remember requesting to look at all these fees, now, you know, in, in other cities, whether it's a minimal fee, whether it's like $2 or $5 per child, that goes into maintenance fees, so that, such as at my work of duty, we have the refurbishment of the grass of the field, and that covers those costs, but again, it depends on the, you know, the agreement, the organization, so this comprehensive study will look into all of that, so it varies, it's, it's not a mandatory, okay, fees will increase, or, or it could be on a tier system, or depending what it is, and I remember back then, because when I was trying to put my child in, in the sports program here, the, the cost every year, even if we've never charged these organizations a single dollar, they've increased these costs hundreds of dollars, on top of having to fundraise, on top of purchasing these additional things, on top of having to, you know, set things up, and so it's, it's, there's more to it than, than what is there, but it's, it seems like, you know, depending on, like, again, the organization, the city might have the lower end of the stick on this case. I also have requested the city to look into the RBI Dodger program, which a year has passed, I have not seen that happen, and this program, I am partner of the RBI Dodger, and I'd like to implement that program into our city, so it reduces the cost for all the children to participate, which includes uniforms, and the official fees, and everything for a low cost, I mean, we charge $10 for all our sports program, that includes all of that, so I was asking the city to have that, they don't have too many RBI Dodger program, or Dodger Dream Field in the San Gabriel Valley area, I know the closest one, City of La Puente has that, so that is another offset to help with the community program, but I did request for the RBI Dodger, and then, but we wanted to see that comprehensive, when I was a commissioner for the Senior Service Commission, those groups have been a mess since many years, and it's still not fixed till today, so it, it changes, it rotates, we want to get it up to par, some, they're not in compliance, and they're not running things as they're supposed to, so this includes all of that.
So, so I remember you did the mother may I, so I just, since we get nothing for so many, I think this is a four, couple years ago?
Yeah, this is a few years ago, and I pushed for this, and they, they shared a little bit.
So I think this time we should be serious, okay, and really, so the mother may I is including your request, the last one, okay, and to give a comprehensive, okay, report regarding how we deal with this and that, I, I know this is very complicated, due to this a lot of interest into it, but city need to, okay, protect the taxpayer, and look into how to be fair to each of the league, and so, and be, to make sure, okay, that, so anyway, I want to move the motion, do I have a second?
I have a second, okay. I'll second it. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, before, before we do roll call, on Councilman Kontos's point, I, I also do, do agree with you that, you know, subsidizing certain, certain leagues, I think is in the interest of the city, and, and that the taxpayers definitely would be in favor, but I also agree with Councilman Wu that we do need to understand how the different leagues are defined, which, which leagues do deserve to be subsidized, and which leagues don't, which, which, you know, which groups are certainly getting access to fields and profiting, we do know that there, there are certain teams that are highly profitable, have not shared their books openly, and, and these are discussions that need to happen in the public, and so, you know, I think, but I do share the concern that, you know, I would not like to see leagues that traditionally have been subsidized, that are nonprofit, that have a long legacy in the community, losing that ability, but it, in, in all transparency, you, you do need to have these things brought into the public sphere every so often, and it's been long enough, so I, I do support the mother may I.
Do we need a roll call?
I do need a roll call, or is there any objection? Councilman Kontos?
No objection.
No objection, Councilwoman, Councilman Wu, no objection? Councilwoman Lopez Viado? Mayor? We're good.
Good, thank you, okay, let's get this report, so hopefully we can help our generation to come, to kind of clean up, we're going to clean up a lot of stuff right now, okay, I know it's, it's very sticky, but we have to touch it, we have to make sure, okay, the book is clean, everybody play by the book, and then that's what the old time doing, maybe it's not working right now, so I think that's why we have to continue to move on.
You have another one?
Yeah, I have another mother may I, okay, the mother may I, we're talking about, we're just talking about, okay, the, the public work and the community service, and maybe, and 2018, previous, previous city manager kind of restructure, and it look like it, it doesn't work, okay, because we still haven't looked at the street, looked at the, the issue we have, so hopefully we can make, okay, clear the, the job description, and then we can know how many supervisor we need, depend on how many staff we have, but right now you're commingling both department, so they all kind of confused, and we confused too, okay, so, so hopefully, and mother may I to look into the structure, okay, with the public work, that is including maintenance, the street, the hill, the, the contract supervising, and make sure our city is clean and safe with all this maintenance and the typical daily, including the flood channel, including et cetera, okay, and sewer, and that is public work, another thing is community service should be independent, including the park rental, okay, our, okay, field, okay, and including the program, including the senior program, the meal program, okay, children program, we have so many program, and then this overwhelmingly, it need to be a, a, okay, community service to really handle all this, okay, and the program and project and task, okay, and then we should have a planning department, so, so mother may I to have the city look into the structure, okay, and to bring back to the city, or bring back to council to look into how we can make our city staff accountable in their job description, clearly their job description, so who is do the monitoring of the contract, who is doing, okay, the street, okay, and with, okay, and the we, and this and that, okay, and so we have some people doing that, right now we are doing it, okay, I don't think it's fair for city council become, okay, and report to the city to clean all this in, because the complaint from the resident, so mother may I to city look into the structure of each of department, okay, and hopefully each department have their deputy director and responsible for each department well-being, okay, and that will tie into our number seven about the employment, the rule, and this and that, and what we need is a link and means of government that can help serve our resident, so this is mother may I.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, so I, I do want to second Councilman Wu's, and, you know, I was going to bring up the, the sportsplex, but I want to hold on to it, because I do think that's one of the issues too that we've had with, with the sportsplex, in, in that we, we don't have an established staffing that, that is, is just for that, like, you know, we're pulling from all kinds of places, and in order to run that facility, you know, in the way that it needs to be run, it, it really does need to have, just that is their lens, and that is what they're working on, so we can fully program it, and, and not have empty days, especially during the summer, and, and so I want to, I want to second the mother may I.
Is there any objection?
No objection, we're good.
Here, no objection, we'll put it on the forecast.
Any other comments?
Um, you can go ahead, you, you serve the floor. Oh, really, okay, I, I try to be quick again, okay, and just really quick, okay, I just want to, regarding the Moon Festival, first thing I want to say, the prayer, mayor prayer, is so beautiful, okay, it's just lovely, and win tear to the mayor, and her tear bring my tear out, okay, normally I don't tear, okay, yeah, I got caught, okay, so tell me you crying, I said, no, it's just very touching, it's, it's a sense of unity, and with every different religion, including our indigenous, show up, okay, and give the prayer to everybody, I think this is something important to healing, okay, and I know we have a different political point of view, but we all try to do the best, okay, and we try to unite our resident together, so thank you, staff, okay, this is so lovely, thank you, mayor, okay, it's a beautiful, okay, event, and the music is lovely, the, all this, okay, string and keyboard, and make it so touching, okay, it's a beautiful, beautiful event, okay, and hopefully next year we have, continue and make this as a tradition to people together, and have all different religion to pray together, because we all want peace, we all want love, okay, this is the first thing, second thing, quickly, I just want to report to people regarding September 30th Moon Festival, currently we almost got 100 vendor, of course, they have a lot of nonprofit, okay, so, but we, we have a 20 or 30 full vendor, okay, and, and they will be, I think, and we have more than 20 different culture performance, we have Indian, the first time, we got an Indian dancer, okay, and for India, okay, in the culture, okay, and, and they will perform, okay, and we have Egyptian dancer, okay, and we have, okay, Chinese dancer, okay, we all different cultures to come together, celebrate the Moon Festival or Fall Festival, we, we try to utilize this street, and try to bring people into this street, and if we get a lot of crowd, I think we can help the older business around there, and hopefully all the business over there participate with this big event, because possible, we never have 100 vendor together on this street, and we even have on the lake square, my ex-crazy girlfriend, okay, Sirius, and they will have a children kid zone for the trend, for this and that, so I think this design is, is very, okay, magnificent, so I hope all, everybody show up, okay, to participate with this one of the, okay, big event, and hopefully, we will continue this momentum, and I can guarantee with all this, we are going to change this street to become downtown, to have people walk around, because if you like, whoa, they have so many service, so welcome September 30th from 10 o'clock, 12 o'clock, we have opening with performance, okay, and tier 9 o'clock, and 7 to 9, we even hire Bruno Ma, oh, yeah, yeah, another real Bruno Ma, it's a Bruno imitation of Bruno and the hooligan, but they are outstanding, they, they such a great performance, and then last time they bring down the roof, okay, due to their performance, so hopefully everybody to be there, okay, and let's participate, our community unity together, and enjoy each other, thank you so much.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor, just because I, I wanted to stay with the, the process, so the mother may I, regarding the outdoor dining processes, costs, that, you know, our, our small businesses, so we can understand, and then what we can do. so we can understand and then what we can do to clean it up, to make it more effective and efficient for small businesses. So we can get more of them to move forward, especially on spaces like Glendora. But there's other spaces in the city, you know, I'm just, you know, we went and had some shabu shabu the other day and I was looking at Hay Market and I was like, wow, this is going to be gorgeous. And there's plenty of spaces in the city where I just envision creating more of that. And again, just making more destinations in the city.
Okay, since you second me, I'm going to second you. Second.
Is there any objection? Harry, no objection, we'll place it on the forecast.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman, Councilman Kontos?
I wanted to add two mother may Is. One, to ask staff to provide possibilities for reviving our city youth commission. I'm not sure what it was called when it was still in existence. And the other is to have a status regarding the disability commission, which was actually talked about back when our last city manager was here, but wanted to see if those would be, if those could be added to staff assignments.
So add a city youth commission?
City Youth Commission to restore what we had before or at least to even learn about it and tell us what the history, where did it go? Why don't we have one now? And then what do we do to bring one back? So we could use, leverage the youth commission to be a leadership cultivation factory essentially to identify new leaders throughout the city as we, as we age out and as new young folks come up in the ranks. And then the second thing, there was a talk in the original plan previously of a disability commission and I haven't heard anything about that. So wanted to ask if that could be unofficial, mother may I? Those are my two.
I really quick, really quick, I want to clarify. Your youth commission is that different than the youth council?
Maybe it's the youth council, I'm not sure, but I don't know, I don't see that.
The same, right?
It's the same, yeah.
No, youth council.
We don't have them.
Oh, we do.
We still have youth council.
Oh, I know that they.
No, it's different?
Through the chair, if I may, it's the same thing. You're talking about the youth council. Youth council is currently not active, so it's inactive. And so it sounds like Councilman Kontos wants to look into bringing that back.
Oh, I will second.
Is there any objection? Harry, no objection, we'll move forward, thank you.
I'll second the disability commission.
Thank you, is there any objection? Harry, no objection, we'll move forward, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are we done? Mother may I's? Okay. Well, I also would like to thank our staff. They did a wonderful job at our prayer breakfast. It was a nice event and I hope that we can continue that tradition. I think it was a very moving event for me and I hope that everyone that attended was moved by it as well. So with that said, I'd like to adjourn our meeting.